I call to order the Bedford Township Planning Commission regular meeting for February 8th, 2023. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to your republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Item number three, roll call. Mr. Lamkowski, can you take the roll call, please?
Yes. Andrews.
Here.
Helm.
Mahoney.
Here.
Fritz.
Here.
Steiner.
Hi.
Lamkowski's here. Gouret.
Here.
Thank you. Item number four, approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda submitted.
Second.
Motion in support of. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Agenda is now approved. Item number five, approval of the minutes of January 11th, 2023.
Motion to approve the minutes of January 11th, 2023, meeting as submitted.
Second.
Moved and supported. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Okay, minutes are approved. Item number six, public comment. Is there anyone from the public at this time who'd like to speak? Okay, seeing that there are no comments at this time, we will move on to item number seven, new business, 7A, request for final site plan approval for James Shike, Splash Car Wash for site improvements located on parcel numbers 5802-163-001-00, car wash and 5802-163-002-00, oil change, two units otherwise known as 7326 Secor Road. Jody?
Yes, again, on the application is Ralph's Construction, Dwayne Hine, Barry Miller, and it's for a Clean Express Car Wash. The owner is Splash Car Wash for Jim Shike, 14725 Dixon Road, Dundee, Michigan. Engineer is Stonefield Engineering. And tonight, I believe Mr. Williams is unable to attend, but there is a representative from Stonefield. Location is 7326 Secor Road. It was developed with a condominium of two uses in the Burton Building, and it's 580216300100 is the location of the unit of the car wash, and 580216300200 is the location of the oil change, C3 general commercial, and 1.1 acres. The subject site consists of approximately 1.1 acres with approximately 141 feet of frontage on Secor Road. Existing on site is approximately 5,282 square foot structure, having been developed as a condominium project of two uses, Splash Car Wash and the Valvoline Oil Change. The existing uses will not be changed, only the name of the car wash to Clean Wash Express and to include site improvements. The proposed site plan is for site work and additional vacuum stations. At this time, there is no proposed addition to the existing structure or any additional structures to be developed on site. As shown on the site plan, the intent is to increase the drive-through area for an entrance to the car wash, traffic flow within the site, and to install 10 vacuum stations to be located on the north side of the structure, and the applicant has obtained an easement from the property owner of the tractor supply. The proposed vacuum area will encroach within the property to the north, thus requiring a recorded easement. The applicant has obtained that easement and from the parcel to the north, and has provided a signed and recorded copy to the planning department, received on February 1st, 2023. The fire department reviewed and approved the site plan on 13123. The Monroe County Drain Commission reviewed and conditionally approved the site plan with comments on 12723. The Monroe County Drain Commission in regards to soil erosion and sedimentation control reviewed and approved the site plan with comments on 13023. The Mannigan Smith Group reviewed and approved the site plan on 212023, and the Monroe County Road Commission had no comments, as provided to the commission via email on 12723. Should site plan approval be granted, a motion should include that the approval shall be contingent upon addressing all comments and conditions in the Bedford Township Fire Department, Mannigan Smith, the Drain Commission, Monroe County Drain in regards to soil erosion and sedimentation, and once the master deed is amended and recorded, a copy shall be provided to the planning department to include in the file. Just for clear update information, in the review letters, you will see that the agency has also requested a copy of the recorded easement. I did scan and forward that to them, so it has been provided to all the agencies. And in the application, there is no rendering for a new sign, so it should be noted that any change in the signage, whether it be for Splash Car Wash or for the Valvoline Oil Change, will need to be submitted to the planning department for review and approval, and then a building permit to ensure compliance by ordinance.
Thank you, Jody.
You're welcome.
At this time, is there anyone from the applicant who'd like to provide any introductory comments to the Planning Commission? Yeah, if you could state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jim Shike, 14725 Dixon Road, Dundee, Michigan, 48131. I'm the owner of the site. We built it in 2001 here in Bedford. The reason for the renovations are, as you all look at the new and trending car washes, the exterior vacs, we've allowed our facility to get very dated. We're ready for renovation. I went out and spoke to a number of car wash companies to try to partner with them to do the renovation. I believe Express Wash is one of the best. You've seen some of their facilities, if you travel to Toledo, on Central Heather Downs or Douglas Tremainsville. They do a wonderful job of the appearance of the site, the adherence to the details. And with the vacs, the monthly passes, I think it would be a much nicer wash than I presently have, and I think that Bedford truly would like to be able to with the VBA to have a product here instead of going to Toledo to wash their cars. And we want to be the facility.
Great. Thank you very much. Gentlemen, turn it over for comments. Mr. Steiner.
Just a quick question. Nice plan, by the way. And I agree with a lot of your comments about a nice looking car wash in Bedford and up to date. And I was looking at the plans, and I took a copy of this, and I showed that to my wife. I said, "Look at this." I said, "This looks pretty nice." So, the one thing I do have, just a quick question, it's just a safety question, since you will have a very small strip there along that drive access, are you planning on putting anything up since there will be people right there? I mean, how wide is that strip actually going to be of the grass, like?
Just under, just under, well, it's going to be 15 feet off our existing curb right now. So you'll have approximately about a three and a half to four foot landscape barrier there. We haven't, we haven't had anything in there aesthetically. It looks like it would be a nice green area. And I honestly, when I look at the plan that they had, it looks pretty nice, having some green area with all the concrete and things, but it, I'm open to suggestions if you had something in mind or a change, but I truly believe what's there will aesthetically look very well.
I mean, definitely want to keep it aesthetically pleasing and everything. And again, in most cases, you're not going to have an issue, but you could periodically have an issue where somebody's driving a little crazy and comes flying in there and up over that curb, and there's people with their cars sweeping out there. Again, I don't think it's a huge issue, but I just wanted to bring it up just for thought for you guys from a liability standpoint, in case you thought, "Well, maybe we should do something there." I mean, I don't think I would personally say that it has to be there. I think it's more of a preference, and I'll let other board members speak on that as well. Something to think about.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Steiner, can you clarify what strip you're referring to?
It's the strip right along that access drive, so the one that goes back to Tractor Supply, where he's going to have all the new vacuums?
So kind of on the north side over by the car wash?
Yeah, the north side.
Okay. Do you have more there, Rick? Or, because I want to build on that a little bit.
Go ahead. Go ahead and build on it.
New technology, trying to figure it out. So, so one question I have on that is, when you look at, at least when I looked at the site plan, it looks like, you know, that existing strip, the curb's going to be adjusted maybe a little bit, cut back. But then when I looked at the rendering, that was also provided, it looks like there's just painted lines, and there's no curb cut there at all. And can you clarify what exactly is planned for that area, if I'm understanding that correctly?
It's actually an area that just run parallel to the drive and parallel to where the vacs come. The vacs will all have stops where you come in. It's going to be a higher elevation, which would, I think, maybe resolve Mr. Steiners. It's going to be a little higher than that, that grade there that the grass is on. So it will be a buffer, excuse me, a green space. I don't, I don't foresee any, with the stops there, any issues that's, these are, these are fairly common now. If you look at all of them, they're set up basically the same. The vacs have their lanes, they have the vac, they have the drop hose, and they have a bumper stop, just like you would have in a parking position.
So if you wouldn't mind, can you, do you mind stepping up here and just show me exactly what you're referring to? Just make sure I understand. So I'm looking at, is this this area here?
No, this green area here, sir. This little bit of green area that's right here, coming along here.
Mr. Chair, can you have him speak into your mic, since the mics are gone now, that so the public can hear? Thank you.
It would be the green area that's, that runs parallel to the existing drive, and it is, it's with the easements where the cars are vac. Here's where they're talking about the cars. This little area here is three to four feet that runs into the other green area that presently exists there.
So. Okay, so you're referring to along the north end of the lot, north being this way? Okay, so I'm, I'm referring to this area here, just outside of the car wash. On this drawing, it's kind of hatched asphalt, and then on this one, it looks like it's a curb cut existing. So what's it going to look like?
The existing curb cut will come back. This will be recessed, this curb cut here, for access to make the corner, to get the radius, so it works. And then this is just, just as you said, it's marking and denotation, less than, their, their estimate is less than 3% of all, any customer comes in and goes directly to the vacuums. That's, they've got 75 stores, and it's a statistic that they provided me with. So the customers are typically going to come right down our lane, go in and get the wash, come out the west end of the wash, then turn into the vacuum spots, and then exit out of the east end, which I feel will relieve a lot of the congestion in the front. A lot of your traffic that has been coming straight out and going onto Secor Road will now be turning, exiting out the rear of the property.
Will you allow traffic coming in directly to the vacuums?
They will. That's what I, they're stating, that it's less than 3% of the customers. So you would be, you know, a minimal amount. The oil change does approximately 40 cars a day, so that's about for an hour that their traffic is coming out of there. In the car wash, we would estimate that you might, under their numbers, I would say it's going to be, it wouldn't even be a daily event where someone went into the vacs without using the wash. Okay, thank you.
So to build on that, boy, this is going to take some getting used to these things. So just to kind of dive in, that, and looking at, I think the plan, everything that was presented is very solid. So, so very good job on pulling together the set that we have. The concern I have is just that area, and I don't know if everyone followed what we were just talking about there. So someone could pull in off a Secor and take a left across the outgoing lanes. There's going to be two turning lanes there, one left, one right. Someone can come in and just cut right across. You've got the car wash, you know, vehicles exiting the car wash, you've got two oil change bays. So to have the incoming cross over potentially three lines of traffic, I have concerns about that. So I, I was going to wait to the end and share that, but we kind of dove right in, and so I'll throw that out there. I don't know how the rest of the commission feels. That was my one concern I had with the traffic flow, the health and safety concern, without some additional form of traffic control on the lot, to minimize the potential for, for something to happen there.
One thing, Tom, if I could make one comment on your thoughts there. The majority, as you used to have the car washes coming straight out with no access to the vacs, the volume there would be every car came out straight. They have a, I don't truly know that number, but I believe what he had told me was 70 to 80% of the cars turn quick and do a quick vacuum. So you're not going to have the car wash traffic, and you're only talking four cars an hour probably coming out of the, the oil change. So I don't, we've never had any traffic issues there. I've been there for 22 years, and we've been able to, that, that, all of the traffic is important to us, and we've, we've been able to manage it in the past. I don't foresee this causing any reason that we, we wouldn't be able to manage it presently with the changes. I do, I do understand your concern, though, sir.
Thank you. Yes.
Not to digress from that point, I appreciate your comments about, this seems to be the market model for car washes these days. You got to have vacuums. Is it just going to be free, or?
Free.
Yeah. So one thing I do notice, whenever I see these car washes, I hear loud music. I'm just wondering, how will you regulate people who are vacuuming their cars and have their, you know, volume up on there? How do you handle that?
We've had, we've had the car wash for 21 years, and there's a lot of staging there, as we do now. So if someone comes in, you know, there, there may be someone that's playing their music too loud. You can, with professionalism and courtesy, ask them to say, you know, there's others here enjoying our facility. I would appreciate it if you had your music at a reasonable level. I think that's, that's a very valid concern. We will have people onsite every day. It's not an undetended wash, and we'd be able to address those concerns.
Would it be a sign posted?
If we needed to, if it became a problem, and we felt it was that big of an issue, we'd certainly be willing to put a sign. As I said, I've, I've been there for 22 years, and I think if you've been by our wash, it's very clean, it's well-kept. We're very prideful in what we do. We don't, we don't want any of those issues either. So we will manage them.
Would a sign saying no loud music playing require a special permit for him?
Well, we don't require those signs to be posted of loud music, but if he was to put up a sign, if the commission so desired that to be an issue, I would look at that as maybe under our directional signage, especially if it's something the commission desired him to have. But it would require an application, and he'd have to show me where it was going to the location. Keep in mind, this is a car wash as it stands today.
Usually the loud music comes at the vacuum area.
I've not experienced that, but I'll take, you know, I know we have a lot of, you know, even in restaurants, we have a patio where, where musics are played as well. I think it's in a lot of common areas, but I do think I'm trustworthy enough that we can manage that situation.
Yes, Jody.
And if I could just add that, keep in mind that the north side where the vacuums are going to be are the, is the access to the tractor supply, and it is in a commercial district. In the ordinance, it does have restrictions should the vacuums have been next to a residential. So there, we do take into consideration if it was a car wash that flooded a residential, but this is a commercial district.
Thank you. Additional comments? Mr. Steiner?
And I, I'll say that I've been to numerous car washes with the outside vacs. I've been around many people, and honestly, I, as many times I've been to one, I haven't hit anybody blaring music so far, and that's been a lot. I mean, like myself, I get out of the car, I turn it down. If I'm at home in the driveway or something, washing the wax in the car, maybe I'll turn it up. But again, I, I'll usually close my doors, turn it up just enough that I can hear it through the car, but it's not killing the whole neighborhood either. So I, I don't think that would be an issue, especially being in a commercial zone like that.
Additional comments? Yes, Mr. Helm.
Very well done plan, I believe. I personally use this car wash two to three times a week just because I'm all my work in the area, and the toy's clean. I've never had any issues getting in and out. I know the vacs aren't here yet, but.
I, I actually went through it today, and getting in and out, I don't ever have any trouble, and I'm in there at least three times a week. So I have no trouble with the vac systems. I've used the vacs in Toledo areas because they don't have any up here. So I don't see any problem with it.
Thank you. Mr. Fritz?
Also, I look at this as asset to Bedford, and we need it. And also for the sound, I think you have the open road there. You open all around there, along with the sound already of the vacuum cleaners, and there's no residential area around there. I don't see a problem with that. And I think it was laid out really good. I like it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Additional comments? Mr. Steiner?
Just one last question. Does, does your vac stay on 100%, or does it turn on when they pull the hose out to use it?
I don't know.
I've been to one in Toledo, and I hear the vac go, and nobody's there. I hear the vac going. And I mean, it's not making a lot of noise, but I'm just curious, because from an electricity standpoint, I think that'd kill you guys.
Yeah, it's on, I'm referencing the gentleman that is in charge of the Express Wash, they're on, but in a, like a, almost a low mode, and then when you grab it, it cycles on.
Okay, a low mode, a low blower mode, and then it picks up. Okay. Because I would say that would just kill you.
I think we're feeling the commission here. I think we're probably getting close to a motion. I want to just mention again, you know, my concern is the traffic flow. And I do understand, and maybe Marty, you can reference here, if the commission were to want to head in this direction, we have a couple of options of, if we want to try to address the traffic flow, health and safety, if we think that's enough of a concern, what, can you walk us through a couple of options we have?
Well, in looking at the site plan ordinance, nothing specific to the site plan. As I informed the chairman earlier that tonight, I have in the past represented Mr. Shike on business transactions. I didn't help him in any regard with respect to the site plan, but I feel there potentially could be a conflict if you asked me in my opinion about the site plan. But with respect to the ordinance, the ordinance provides the planning commission with the duty to either approve the site plan as presented, approve it with conditions, disapprove, or request modifications in the site plan. So there's three options for the planning commission, to approve, approve with conditions, disapprove, or request modifications, if that answers your question, Mr. Chairman.
It does. Thank you. So we could either approve it outright, consider this for whoever's about to make the motion. You can approve outright as is, approve with conditions, and if we're going to approve with conditions, we have to be specific.
Tom, could I make one more comment before we get to that point?
Let me, let me finish the last two bullets, and then yes. So approve with conditions with specificity and what those conditions are, disapprove, or make a motion to have it with modifications, to have it come back to, in this case, I would say to address the traffic flow, health and safety concerns. Yes.
I just, when, when we designed this, we've tried to make every effort to make sure that it's, if it's not convenient and safe for our customers, I won't, I won't do really well with this investment. I have to make it a place that's better than Toledo, so that our Bedford residents use it. I can assure you, a lot of thought has went into this plan. I really, I've been there for 21 years. I feel real comfortable that this plan works well on that site. And if there are issues, I'm certainly going to address them and figure out how we mediate and resolve them. You know, that, as a business, I have to do that to make it more convenient and a place that people in Bedford want to frequent. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, unless there's any further comments, we are looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Mahoney?
I'll make a motion. I propose, we accept the proposal as presented for Burton Building condominium two uses lot 5802163001-00, car wash, and 5802163-002-00, oil change, 1.1 acres, zone C3 general commercial. Pending, or with the approval of addressing all terms and conditions and comments of the Bedford Fire Department, Mannigan Smith Group, Monroe County Drain Commission, and Monroe County Drain Commission in regards to soil erosion sedimentation control. Once the master deed is amended and recorded, a copy shall be provided to the planning department to include in the file.
Okay, motion by Mahoney, supported by Mr. Fritz. Any further discussion? I'll just say I'm going to vote no, and it's from the traffic perspective, the safety perspective. I think it's, it's a great plan. Wish you well. Thank you for the investment. I remember many, many years ago, having a similar discussion about Tim Hortons and their parking lot and, and concerns, and fortunately, that all came to fruition, and there were issues with that. That, that have been addressed, but, but for that reason, I can't support this. Mr. Lamkowski, take the roll call.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Fritz?
Yes.
Lamkowski is a yes. Steiner?
Aye.
Andrews?
Aye.
Helm?
Aye.
Motion passes six to one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you. Good luck.
And Tom, if you do have those concerns, I, you come to me and I'll address them.
Okay.
That's my.
I do wish you well. I mean, it's great. Thank you for the investment in the community. All right, item number 7B, discussion on section 400.1922 sign ordinance. Jody, you're, you're, you're very excited over there.
Yes, I, sorry, it wasn't working before. I enclosed a portion of the sign ordinance for in the section.
Did Mr. Strike have a question?
You're good. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Good night.
And I have highlighted several areas for discussion, and then I did encourage the commission to drive through the community and take a look at some of the temporary signs as that section, and real estate signs, and agricultural signs. And these are listed under temporary signs. I'm not, if anybody has any direction they'd like to provide for us on their thoughts, we don't have too many issues with real estate signs. They are usually, the real estate agents are usually very good about keeping them on the sign on the property that they're representing for sale. But other than that, the real estate signs are pretty straightforward in what they're permitted. They're not permitted to be on a trailer, a truck, or anything within the, on the property, but they are allowed the, or by two signs, I believe their sizes are. So the only question I have for that portion is, it states in number two, no more than two such signs shall be allowed on any lot or parcel. That, in my cases, I would look at that as if you have two front yards, you should be. I don't know if you need two signs on a parcel, but that's where that comes in for two signs. I don't know what the commission's desire is to. I don't know what the commission's desire is to change any of that language within the real estate signs.
Jody, the only question I had was what about, you know, a sale sign that a lot of times you see kind of a directional real estate sign at the beginning of a subdivision? Or you might see an open house sign that they put out at the beginning of a subdivision? How do those fall in the current language?
Those are actually considered non-accessory signs and they would not be permitted. We have to keep in mind that some locations and some parcels own to the center of the road and some own to the road right of way. And if we're putting signs on those corners, they could be owned by another property owner. And that would be such as we have the same concern when it comes to garage sale signs. You'll see garage sale signs go up, but they're not always on the same person's property. And we have to keep in mind that if you do not have permission to put the sign out there, you should not be putting in a non-accessory sign on someone else's property.
So.
I don't know how we can, if we get calls, the ordinance will go out. They will either call the person that ordered the phone number that's on the sign, let them know it's not permitted. And if they don't go out and get it, the ordinance department will take it down and bring it back.
So if I am selling my house, the last lot way in the back of the subdivision and I go out or my real estate agent goes out and puts a directional sign, hey, open house, at the start, the opening, the entrance to the subdivision and we don't have permission from anyone, under our current ordinance, that's not allowed.
It's not permitted, no.
That happens all the time.
It happens. And I'll be honest with you, as long as I've worked here, we've never had a call on that. Most of the real estate agents put them out when they are doing an open house and we surely don't want to, as a township, hinder somebody looking to sell their property. But as long as I've been here, I've not heard anybody call and state that someone's having an open house and we've gone out and taken down.
I would hope that's the case. I mean, I would hope someone wouldn't be too upset about that. But should we add that it is allowed in this section? A sign for open house or additional, you know, signage for advertising the sale of the property can be provided somehow at the beginning or the entrance of a subdivision?
Mr. Kovret?
Yes.
I agree with you 100% on that. So, but the only question I would have in doing that is front of a subdivision, okay? Yours or mine or where I used to live, you used to see them all the time, right? And if you're in the back, I agree. The thing is, you can say that, but how do you get permission from whom? If you're a lot owner in a subdivision, it may be part of a common space that's owned by the subdivision. So then, I mean, I don't, I just don't see anybody that's going to argue the point. But you might say, well, if there's 50 houses in here, we've got to have 26 have to vote that we allowed to do that. Then it gets down a rabbit hole. So I don't know, do we?
If we don't see it as an issue, then maybe we don't bring it up.
This might go back to Marty. We talked a while back about ordinances in general are prohibitive. Because you know how we said some of the ordinances, that if it doesn't say you can do it, how that interpretation went down, especially when we talked about some of the things that it came up over chickens and things like that. People said, well, it doesn't say I can't do it, but it doesn't say you can either. So.
Yeah, you're talking about the permissive.
Right.
Part of our ordinance where we have permitted uses in every zoning district. That's where it comes in to be a permissive. So you can't have chickens unless chickens are specifically a permitted use in the agricultural district or the residential district, things like that. With respect to getting permission, a lot of those common areas are regulated by the homeowners association or if it's a condominium, the condominium association. So there would be an avenue in many subdivisions. Not all subdivisions have co-owners or subdivision associations. So there'd still be a question there and the signs probably shouldn't go up if you don't have permission from the property owner. But who's going to police that? And does the complainant have authority if it's not on their property to complain? That's another question. Probably do as a citizen that's offended by a sign that if it's not permitted by the ordinance, I guess you wouldn't have to be a property owner to complain.
Thank you, Marty. I agree with it. So how do you, how do we address it? I don't know.
I have a question, Jody, and this might go to what we're talking about a little bit. The right of way, that's beyond the sidewalk typically?
Sometimes the sidewalks are within the road right of way. Depends on the location of the, depending on a section line road or a subdivision road. Section line roads are normally 66 feet in width and subdivisions are normally 60. Some of our older subdivisions might be 50 feet in width. Depends on the width of the road where the sidewalk possibly could be.
So that can regulate the position or placement of a sign, correct?
Normally, a road right of way is where a telephone pole is located. If you're looking at it, we usually advise people if they're going to put a sign up for maybe a special event, that it must be within the road right of way. You cannot put a sign in the road right of way. So if you see signs that are sometimes on the corner of, I'm going to say, Secor and Sterns, you will see them all right out front. They are all within the road right of way. The telephone pole is normally where the road right of way is.
And that's against the ordinance, right?
And that would be against the ordinance. We don't allow anything to be constructed within, we try to avoid anything within a road right of way.
It seems to be where most of the visual clutter comes from. I mean, there's other forms like we've talked about before.
Yeah, it's a bit of a tough one. I mean, it, if no one's complaining about it, no one's bringing it up, but does this fall into the same category as garage sale signs or item for sale signs or I buy houses signs or, I mean, they're all kind of the same category, right?
Correct.
But those are special signs.
Those are temporary, non-accessory signs and you'll see non-accessory signs are not permitted. So we'll move on to the next section. So we have a little bit of idea on the real estate. I don't want to get hung up on too much decision making because we are just touching base with this section and it is a large section because it is temporary signs. B is agricultural produce signs. I think we are very restrictive on those. You, when you read through them, you'll see on an agricultural, you can have no more than one such sign. Real estate, you can have two signs. This is where it gets kind of cumbersome, trying to advise, why can I put two signs for a sale sign, but I can only put one sign for my produce to be sale when I'm permitted to have produce in an ag district? And then you'll see number three says, "An agricultural produce sign shall only be located on the same lot or parcel where the agricultural produce sales are taking place and must be located no more than 100 feet from the location of the produce sales." Well, sometimes you can get farmland, five acres. Are they supposed to put the sign in the middle of their yard? How I know it's for sale when their house sits 250 feet back from the road? So I think that those are the languages I want to take a look at. I'm okay with requiring some restrictions on, that are implemented. If you look at number six, "In all zoning districts except in the agricultural district, the lot or parcel where the agricultural produce sign is located shall be at least one and a half acres in size. There shall be no minimum acreage requirement for lots or parcels in an agricultural district." However, we have some ag districts that are less than one and a half, but how do we restrict that they can't sell produce? Those are the languages that I like, some of the sections that are very restrictive when you start looking at agricultural uses and sizes of parcels that we have. We have ag two, which is now 165 feet of frontage and two and a half acres. However, they are still permitted agricultural uses other than special approval with a pond or different types of accessory buildings or horses that restricts out of an ag. So if you could kind of give some feedback on those types of languages in that district, I would appreciate that. Political signs.
Want any comments on that?
Oh, absolutely.
Because you hit the points that I actually had marked. And one of the things that I thought of, as you said, if you're in an ag area, maybe it's three, four, five, six, eight hundred foot of frontage and you're only allowed one sign, if you're selling produce, you're going to put it directly in front of the stand and if it's a roadway, you know, people are driving 45, 50 mile an hour, one sign. And I thought, well, again, what's wrong if you have one at each end of your property so the traffic coming either way can see your signage? And you pointed out, we've got two signs available for a real estate sign and that could be even a small lot if they've got two, you know, frontages. So that's my thought on that one. And then you touched base, I had it circled here, the one and a half acres, it has to be a minimum of one and a half. I thought it was a little large, especially when you have a lot of parcels that may be just one acre, which obviously is plenty of room to be able to grow things on a one acre parcel. So my thoughts are, I mean, if we're going to restrict it, maybe a max of one acre there instead of one and a half, because other than that, in most cases, you're going to have two plus acres to be able to do it. Because most people don't have one and a half acre parcels, either one or five or, you know, unless there's a, has been done. So, and that's the only thing is, again, I again marked it where it said no more than one such sign. So again, I thought both directions. So those are my thoughts on those.
Thank you. Mr. Lankowski?
Just an opinion, but I would think that the agricultural signs could have a lot of the same parameters as the real estate signs, just with the wording changed, and still fall within something reasonable. If we're allowing it for real estate, why couldn't you just copy and paste and change some verbiage? But I would think all of those things would be usable in that situation as well.
Any thoughts on the acreage?
I mean, I'm, I have an acre and I can grow plenty of vegetables on my land if I want to. I think, I mean, a half acre is small, but anything really, a half acre is enough land to grow vegetables and sell them out by the road. So I don't know if there needs to be a restriction besides it. Does it have to be an ag only currently? Or can it be in a residential? I mean, people have raised gardens if their kids want to sell vegetables in a subdivision.
That's what Six is talking about there. All zoning districts except agriculture, that's where the.
One and a half acres comes into play.
And that's something that could be adjusted.
Jody, you look like you want to say something.
No, I don't have an issue taking the language out of restricting the size because there is some that do sell their produce that I'll say, we have people that are involved in 4H that don't actually live in ag districts that grow to gain their Girl Scout badges. And so I don't have an issue with the size of the parcel because it is listed under agricultural produce signs. I, I think if you're not agricultural, in an agricultural district and residential, other than if you have a larger piece, you're not actually growing vegetables and selling them permitted as a commercial use in a residential district, if that makes sense. We wouldn't allow a commercial use in a residential district.
Mr. Mahoney?
Do you have any comments?
I think it was a few months back, I sent an article to you and it's basically an analysis of sign laws. And this one paragraph, I'll read it. It's enforceability of common regulations. So what regulations are still enforceable? A good rule of thumb is that if the ordinance requires an official to read the sign to determine how it is regulated, then the ordinance is likely content based and presumptively unconstitutional. Regulations that limit a sign's size, location, illumination, lighting and placement on public property are generally permissible because those regulations could be enforced without reviewing the sign's message. Other restrictions require more analysis. So what I'm reading into this is if we're regulating, you can have a produce sign this size, but not a political one, it could be unconstitutional. And maybe we should be looking at general guidelines as far as size, quantity, something more qualitative based than, or quantitative based and qualitative. We'll be treading on warmer waters.
Thank you. Mr. Fritz?
I hate to go backwards, but where does eggs fall in?
Do what?
Eggs, chicken eggs. At one time, I thought you couldn't have signs for selling eggs. Is that correct?
Well, we don't allow chickens in a residential, so you would have no chickens to produce eggs to sell in residential.
Agriculture, though.
Agricultural, we do not regulate the sale of the produce and we do not regulate, they would have to have them. I believe there's something with the USDA and Mr. Camprath can maybe expand on that part. I'm not sure how eggs and beef and that are regulated for sale in an ag district.
And I don't see anything in here about guidelines on a stand in the front yard, whether it's agriculture or residential and you're selling produce, you know. How does that come into play?
We don't regulate the fruit stands in the markets for the agricultural districts.
Thank you.
Enough feedback on the egg portion there?
Moving on to political signs. I know there are some restrictions with the, when we get involved with the election end of it. I think we're going to work with Mr. Camprath on what we can and cannot regulate. I'm not sure of all the state requirements and that of political signs. Signs advertising candidates or soliciting votes in support of or against any proposition or issuance in any general primary, special school or any other election shall be subject to the following regulations. I'm not sure of how much we can say yes and no to on a sign when it comes to political things, items with the school. If anybody's doing a millage, I don't know the ramifications of how much we can restrict. I think we are pretty restrictive. I know that there are certain, the clerks department gives out when it gets closer, if anybody has any questions regarding a flyer of political signs that kind of goes in conjunction with our ordinance and what can be permitted. But I don't know how many signs are permitted. It goes by size of the parcel. They may be erected 30 days prior to the election. Must be removed no later than 10 days after the election, but I don't know how much of that is actually state mandated or how much we can as a township restrict that in our community.
Comment on that one? I believe, because the question has come up over a number of years. So from a constitutional standpoint and freedom of speech laws, I don't even, I don't believe that we can restrict it even 30 days before the election and 10 days after. A lot of times you see from a primary to a general, some people just leave the signs out. And Mr. Camprath probably have to answer this one. I don't think we can legally force them to take it down because it falls under freedom of speech laws. Same thing, I know it's very controversial in some places when people say, I'm going to put up a flag. Constitutionally, it's a freedom of speech right. So I'll defer that to Mr. Camprath on the signs.
And the quantity of signs you want to put in your front yard?
I think we can do quantity, but I think it's the timing that we can't.
I don't have the specifics, but I know there's, I believe it's a federal court case and it might be reflected in what Mr. Mahoney was reading, that it's, you can't regulate speech. And so your signs, as far as size, perhaps number and things like that and where they can be put, can uniformly be regulated, but it can't be different if it's a pro candidate, particular candidate or anti candidate or even if it's vulgar language, you can't really regulate that. It may be very distasteful and not help the person who put the sign up, but we can't get into that business. Now, I think there is also something, what Mr. Steiner is saying, it's either the front end or the back end that we can't regulate as far as when the sign can go up. And I'm thinking it's how many days before the election is what we can't regulate. And however, after the election, I think a reasonable amount of time can be required for removal. So there's a lot of things and it seems to be a bit of a moving target. And as appellate courts look at those cases that come before them, they, each of the courts have a little different take on things. So it's difficult to settle on what's actually allowed. But that's very good information that Mr. Mahoney was reading from. What is your source for that?
It's Lori Genovich from Foster and Swift. She updated an article she wrote back in June 2021 and this was released March of 2022.
Was there a reference to a court case?
For which issue?
For any, for any, I mean, she.
There's a different court case, it's cited for whatever subject she was talking about. One, they did. One, they did, she did talk about time restrictions, I'll read that, if you want me to. Says, "While courts are split on post-event removals, they generally disfavor time restrictions on the display of political signs before an election. Multiple courts have struck down ordinances that only permitted political signs to be displayed during a period of 45 days before the election. Given that political signs must be regulated in the same manner as other temporary signs, is likely sign ordinances cannot limit the time a sign can be displayed prior to an event."
So it does talk about pre, but not post, in that, in that particular scenario.
Mm-hmm. And if you guys want to start, I can forward it to you.
Marty, would you like to?
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, if you could forward that to all of us, that'd be great. Or maybe get it to Jody, and she can get it to all of us. So Jody, at this point, I mean, you're gathering, I'm sorry, Mr. Lamkaski?
I was just gonna give some info. Actually, on michigan.gov, there is no regulation on time before, but on all state roads, they must be removed within 10 days following an election, on Michigan state roads.
Okay, so state roads.
And our ordinance does set post-election 10 days must be removed, so that's in line with...
That's probably where that came from, I would imagine, yep. So Jody, I mean, as we're going through this, I mean, we're batting things around, we're not giving you any specific direction. Is that the next discussion, where, you know, maybe you're gonna kinda...
Yes, the next discussion, when we bring it back, will be when we want to condense it. I'm looking to, highly recommend to remove some language and downsize and work with what we're, what language we have, but maybe be a little bit flexible with some of the requests that come through. The next one, you'll see I have important for discussion. Community event and special event commercial signs. As you look through that, we only allow one sign, must be permitted on the lot where it must be held, requires a permit. And such signs on a lot of parcel where the event will be held, number seven, shall be permitted only for two weeks prior to the event, and shall be removed within 18 hours after the event. But in any event, shall be removed no more than two weeks and 18 hours after the first being placed on the lot of the parcel. Such signs shall be permitted for more, no more than four events per year. Are we looking at those, the special event signs where they're? I'm just gonna throw some ideas out on events. Should a location wanna have a sale? I don't know about requiring them to come in for a two-week permit if they're doing a one-week sale, or today we're having a special. And so we don't allow any of those types of community events for sales, for specials, even such as Krogers can't put anything out front that has for sale, a special that they're running, or anything of that nature. So I don't know how much restrictive. We don't allow banners, posters, pennants, balloons, and you see all of those are flying everywhere. I don't have a problem with the pennants. My issue is in multi-unit structures. When each multi-unit puts one or two flags out, I think we need to restrict that, but I'm not against those. But if it becomes dilapidated, it needs to be removed and replaced if you want to have a banner sign. Sometimes you see them, and they've been flapping so long that they're ripped and torn, and that's where then it becomes problematic of, that's what's represented, representing the community, regardless if it's representing just that business. I'm not in favor of the two-week timeframe. I think that it should, that should be kind of looked at of what type of event's going to be. One sign, maybe one sign for a multi-unit, maybe one sign, depending on the size of the sign. And that no such sign shall be permitted on a lot or a parcel containing a dwelling unit. Well, some of those locations, we have commercial and a dwelling unit, might be a mixed use in the downtown areas, overlay districts. So maybe we should look at amending that the overlay does have their own sign ordinance, but some of it refers back to our section of the ordinance. So maybe we could include that, should the lot or parcel containing a dwelling unit within an overlay district. We have some that are prior legal nonconforming. A commercial building on a residential lot, it's been commercial. Do we want to allow a nonconforming parcel that has a nonconforming use? Those are my thoughts. I do think that community events and special events are important for our community to keep businesses thriving, but I, I don't wanna just allow everything to be put up either. We still need to make sure that it's aesthetically appealing for the district, and should it be a buddy in a residential district? Maybe it can be, instead of getting a building permit, a rendering in size must be submitted to the planning department for review and approval, and the planning department sign off on it, and the building department sign off. But the fee of a special event, if a person's having a one day or even a two week, sometimes we have places of worship that will advertise for vacation Bible school, and we allow them to put up a temporary sign. They come in, get their permit, and they pay their $15 for a two week. Sometimes I feel offended by making them pay, because I have so many that just put up their banner signs and their temporary signs, and they do the right thing. So I think we definitely need to look at that for those types of things going on in our community. We want to encourage those to continue, but I don't know about charging them to put up a temporary sign as long as it's approved somehow through the township. Any thoughts?
I was, I was looking at that one myself, and, because I thought builder permit for these, it just doesn't make sense. You're not building anything. And I honestly think, especially because of timing, somebody might not realize the timing, if we say to bring it to planning commission, let us discuss it. Honestly, I think the planning department should be given the leeway to do this, like you said, and at least make it an authorization process, where if you signed off in your department, and the building department, Dennis, signs off, I think that's probably enough. And I think it's probably, you know, a little crazy to go, say, pay the, you know, permit fee. Granted, you might, again, if they give you the information for the approval, the sign off is, okay, you do know that you're gonna be allowed to put up the sign during this period to this period, must be kept in good order. If it's defrayed, you know, tattered, you know, and looking, you know, in a terrible condition, then you will be in violation of ordinances for, you know, the sign itself at that point. Simple language, you know, a single, single piece of paper, I think we could cover that, and then, again, planning and, and building department sign off.
Any additional comments?
Okay, on to construction signs. Not too many concerns I have in this section, if anybody else has any. I think it's pretty straightforward for builders and for any type of construction, because we do allow temporary signs pending permanent signs for construction, residential areas. I don't actually, nothing, nothing in this specific area jumps out at me that we should amend or change. We definitely wanna make sure that if someone's putting up a construction sign, we require them sometimes during site plan for construction entrances, those types of things. If anybody has any other questions regarding this section or any comments?
So I do have a comment there, section number eight. It talks about a multi-phase development and the sign moving it when more than 50% is constructed. Again, depending on the size of development, I think that sort of penalizes the developer. You know, if you get 51% that's built, and he's still got 49% to build, and depending on what the economy's like, maybe it's not so much when people are looking, they gotta keep up their advertising and really keep the pressure on there. So maybe that's something to look at. And then what happens if it's a development that has entrances off of two separate roads, such as over here, we've got the new development going on off Jackman. You can get to it off of Brookwood and off of the Jackman roadside by the school. Now, granted, that's not all one subdivision, but let's just say that it was, being built as a one in phases. You could say you can put a sign on Jackman Road, but you can't put it on Dean. I think in those kind of cases, they should be allowed to put one at each side. So, I mean, if you advertise on Dean, and people going down Jackman are never gonna see it.
I would suggest then in number four, maybe we add, no more than one such sign shall be permitted on a lot of parcel where the construction activity is occurring unless there are double road frontages.
Unless there's dual ingress, egress.
Yes, could add it there. And I'm fine with removing the section portion of eight of that, no more than 50%. However, keep in mind, it is for just multiple phases and multiple plat subdivisions. Usually, that's when you get back into the back of the subdivision, you surely wanna keep a sign out front.
Yeah.
But I think if we allow for two signs, that, that does cover that section as well.
So item number six, I was looking at the, no larger than 32 square feet in area and five feet in height for any other type. Is that large enough? I mean, that's not a large sign. And I don't know, I didn't do this, I was gonna kinda drive around and, hey, what's up now? My gut tells me there's signs up now that are larger than that.
I think most of the development signs, the builders, they're generally not eight feet wide.
I know. If I could just, I'll just say, when it says construction signs not be larger than four square feet in area and four feet in height, that's if you're building a one-family, and I think that looks at it as if a builder wants to put their sign that says their company on it, or a two-family, which is normally a smaller parcel, but then no larger than 32 square feet and five feet in height for, such as a development or a commercial building or of that nature, of any other type, you can have 32 square feet of area signage. But when you look at a one-family home or a two-family home, they're looking at it as that a smaller four-square-feet in area of mostly what builders will have out front when they're building a home.
Yeah, 'cause if you had a four-by-six sign, then you could elevate that off the ground enough, you'd be probably within that 32. I don't think they get too much bigger than that.
Yeah, it just caught my eye. I just...
I looked, I did look at that, and that's why I got that thought.
It's something to think about, and when we come back with comments, as you're driving around the township, looking to see what's out there, and maybe that's fine the way it is, maybe we need to increase it a little bit. Any other comments? Jody, did we skip E, temporary signs?
The what?
Did we skip over E?
Temporary signs pending permanent signs.
Sorry.
Oh. Where am I at? Oh, yes.
Yeah.
So we'll go back to E. Temporary signs pending permanent signs. The only main comment I have on this section, I do think it should require, start with number four first, because it says, "Such sign shall not exceed the maximum height or maximum area requirements for a permanent sign for the particular zoning district where the lot or parcel is located, except the maximum area shall not exceed 24 square feet." Well, first of all, we don't have any signs that require 24 square feet unless they're a real estate sign or anything smaller. I would like to take that section out. I don't have a problem with them being 50 square feet, because they're what's pending a permanent sign. Most of our signs are 50 square feet and seven feet in height. I don't have an issue getting rid of that. I don't know why we would restrict it to 24 square feet, but I have desires to remove that. It says temporary signs pending permanent signs. Such signs are permitted only in commercial or industrial zoning districts. I think then that falls where the temporary sign for development falls onto the next section of the temporary signs. So I think maybe condensing it into temporary signs pending permanent signs, or just temporary signs, and then permanent signs. I don't know how we wanna condense it down. But the other section, such signs shall require a building permit, I think on a temporary sign, if they submit a rent, shouldn't just submit a rendering, I don't think they should have to pay for a building permit and then turn around and put in a $30,000, $40,000 permanent monument sign, and then pay for another permit for that sign, because the cost of the sign goes by, or the cost of the permit goes by the sign. So I would desire just to have it submitted to the planning department and the building department be reviewed. Unless it should have electrical, then of course, we should all have a permit for that as requirement, but...
I think it's okay to take that out, but I think you'd still probably wanna leave in there not to exceed the allowable limits for the permanent sign on that property.
Leave the first part that says, "Such sign shall not exceed the maximum height or maximum area requirements for a permanent sign for the particular zoning district where the lot or parcel is located." And then take out, except the area maximum shall not exceed the 24 square feet.
If they're allowed 50, put up a 50 sign, and they can't go 60, it's, admitted 50.
I can move it up.
Or it becomes repetitive. Oh, "Such signs are only permitted in the commercial or industrial zoning districts." Temporary signs could be put up for residential development. And so that's where I think, where you have to look at the temporary sign, and the temporary sign pending permanent signs for construction, maybe downsize them into one, because we don't want them only permitted in commercial and industrial. If someone wants to put a temporary sign up pending a permanent sign for residential development, I believe they should be permitted to do so, how they're advertising for the development that's going to be coming. The name of it, I guess, because we, most of our, most of our subdivisions are all named, and all of the condominiums all have specific development names. Number seven, "Such sign shall be permitted only for 60 days or until the permanent sign is created, whichever is first to occur, but in any event shall be moved, removed no more than 60 days after first being placed on the lot or parcel. There shall be no extensions or subsequent approvals." I know when Mr. Harrell was here, sometimes it can take longer than 30 to 60 days to get a permanent sign, so I don't know if we want to restrict that to 60 days, or that would be some language I would like the commission to look at of a timeframe for a temporary sign pending a permanent sign.
You could possibly leave in 60 days with a proof of purchase of the new sign, so show the agreement, and if they need an extension because the manufacturer is behind, you can give them that extension. We talk, you talk about trying to keep the other signage we just talked about, like a, a development, and then the temporary, but here, we're talking still about 60 days. Well, a development, we can't say that's like a temporary and take that out in 60, that could be years. So that's the only we can't combine if we're gonna try to combine those.
I'd guarantee if you added that kind of language. Yeah, it's fair to the...
Still there. Hey, Jody, anything else with section E?
Yeah. And then we already discussed the construction signs.
Other, other temporary signs, yep, G.
Other temporary signs. Other temporary signs that may not be provided for in this section and which may be required to be allowed shall be permitted as follows. Does anybody have any comments on this section? Because I think it's a lot of restriction for other temporary signs when we're very specific on temporary signs. My opinion is we are restrictive on temporary signs. I don't know if we need this section of other temporary signs. Unless anybody has any comments of where they would like something to remain, or Mr. Camprath, I think, has a comment.
I guess I'm wondering, does this cover when you have a panel van with a sign painted on the side or an advertisement? Is that considered other temporary sign? And parking the van in someone's front yard, whether it be political, or, I guess that would be covered under a different section. So, I mean, other temporary signs can take many different forms.
And again, we have to avoid regulating content.
Yes.
And I will say, most of our sections all say, "There shall be no sign on a trailer or vehicle or any other portable apparatus or on the lot or parcel. Other temporary signs where permitted shall be attached to or setting on the ground or on a wall, attached to a building or a lot or parcel, and that is under other temporary signs." As well as the other sections of...
if it's my personal vehicle and it does advertise, that's my business. So I'm home for the weekend and I literally parked it in my parcel, you know, for 48 hours. What if I went on vacation for a week and I can't park it in my garage? I have to park it outside. So it's, that's another one of those is Pat said that, you know, cold water or thin ice, either one, we gotta watch that one. So again, if we, I think if we, again, talking to, like Mr. Campbrot said, permissive ordinance versus what you really can't do.
Well, when the language says there shall be no such sign, that's specifically saying you cannot have it.
Right.
So that's what I'm saying is that for other temporary signs, that portion is in every section of no signs on trailers, vehicles. And then the other sections are specifically for residential districts of commercial uses. So I don't know if that is something we need to remove from all sections because then we're going to be restricting them of the, like on someone's vehicle for their own personal business.
But it seems like the ordinance is written such that signs on a trailer or vehicle are not permitted if intended to be a sign for the lot or parcel on which they're residing, correct? So if they're meant to be mobile but for a separate business, that's not associated with the parcel, that, that's compliant with the ordinance, correct?
Any other comments?
Kind of a slippery slope with the vehicle and business.
I could see if the vehicle was parked out there and it just sat there, you know, for months on end, literally an advertising vehicle. But if it's, you know, something they're constantly use as part of their business, if you're, if you're a developer, you know.
Well, that would, exactly what Mr. Andrews just said, though, that's not actually, no part of the sign or teller should be on any portable aspect on the lot. So I'm just gonna use Mr. Helm. If he has his business truck parked at his house, it's not where his business is located. That would be not ever, I mean, no different than me putting a sign out front of my house if his truck is parked there, but it's not a business advertising for where the location is at.
But if I have a new house under construction and I'm parking my business trailer, vehicle, whatever there, and you've got supplies and things like that in the, in there, you might leave it there for a couple of weeks or a month even if it's got stuff that you're going to continually use during your construction. So that, that's the only thing I think is a little gray.
I don't know, that's something we can regulate.
Yeah, at that point, I would argue that it's not intended as a sign for the lot. It's just intended for the use of construction.
And I would agree with that.
At that point, it just happens to have, you know, the company's name plastered on the side.
So that's why I'm saying it's just something that we can't try to regulate that.
Well, I'm not saying that we should be regulating. That's what I'm saying is that I don't know where we draw the line of regulating other temporary signs, this whole section.
You know, I was like looking at this like from a whole new lens or perspective and maybe there should be basic regulations, you know, regulating size, location, but nothing to do with content. And maybe only when you're talking different zoned areas like industrial, agricultural, PBO, construction, that you can expand the size regulations in certain districts. But it's almost like, I look at this, maybe a third of these, really we shouldn't have at all, you know? And maybe the ordinances will, should legally be much looser than they are now just because it's a free speech country, you know? So I don't know, I'll, I'll send this to you when I send that article and just some ideas I had drummed up. I could be way off base, but that's, might be worth looking at.
Any other comments? And I really don't know what to do with H. We know we have all that everywhere, multiple flags, inflatables, the blowups with the Some of them are distracting, some of them are in visual clearances. I think there should be some restriction on them because of those safety concerns.
That's what I was gonna say, line of sight, short clear distances, things like that for sure.
I think to the point made earlier regarding flags, flags seem like maybe a different issue than an inflatable, but.
Yes.
When you're talking, are you talking a US flag so, versus any old flag?
I don't think we have anything in our ordinance that regulates the American flag. So these are flags for commercial uses, I believe.
Jody, have you, and maybe Pat, I know you've done some homework there. Have you looked at other examples or can we look at other examples, what's out there? I mean, this is kind of a tough one to tackle. Can we start with what's out there and maybe that'll help us formulate what we want to do?
And I will say, there are a lot of communities that have amended their sign ordinance to be more flexible and allow more uses on site. I just know that we have a lot of residents that get concerned when there is 25 signs and flapping flags and then we get calls. So I just don't want to open-end it. We have to take into consideration. I can supply some, the communities that we've looked at, I know Mr. Mahoney has looked at other communities and I can supply that language and we can amend it, but we do have to keep in mind that we have to still make it respectable for our community as well.
Yeah, absolutely. Just looking for some examples to like, do we want it? No, we don't want to do that. Hey, this is a good idea. That may help us formulate some, some feedback on H.
Majority of people are gonna be within the compliance without even thinking about it, but you've always got that, somebody that's gonna push the envelope.
And I will say, it becomes problematic when we have someone that does the right thing, calls the township, asks what the zoning district they are, what they're permitted, and then we tell them the process, you have to get the permit, you have to submit a rendering. And then we have other locations that the sign just gets put up and then unless nobody complains, there's no way we know. So I think if we look at it, make it a little bit more doable and workable for the community and the residents and the business owners, I think it'll be easier for all applicants to move through the process.
Agreed. I mean, the way it reads right now is obviously pretty restrictive, so we've gotta work on that a little bit. So what's next, Jody?
Next, we will be having a meeting on February 22nd. We are done with the sign ordinance for tonight.
So.
That's all I'm looking, because that's the second section, is all the temporary section of the sign. I'm trying to condense it and then Katrina's been updating each section as we go. And then once we get it to where we can amend the language, because it will be then have to be scheduled for a public hearing, so we have a large section to keep going. But I don't want it to become overwhelming because it is a lot of language and a lot of sections to look at. And I just don't want to make any decisions until we know for sure how we want to move forward. So all of the language that was already discussed in the first section, Katrina has amended that and now we're going to move to the next section. So I will not be putting this on the next meeting, so you will have time to at least gather some information, make some changes of the language that you want to propose. Next meeting will be the 22nd. We will be moving forward with the CIP, the capital improvement program plan. We have worked on that. Mr. Mahoney and Mr. Crowe Ratt have been very much involved with the meetings and Katrina and I, Ms. Hirschberger and Mr. Miller from finance. So we will be presenting the document and we have a good, solid asset list to continue to work with. We're working on getting that to the commission. I would like it to be able to take it to the township board. So the township board, once the budget begins to be reviewed, because they will have to allocate money and you will have to determine where that monies are going and what, how much is, has to be allocated each budget year. It will be coming back then again in six months for another review and update. So as of now, we will be moving forward with that for the next meeting. So if you have any questions, once I send out the packet, please take a look at it, reach out to the planning department or reach out to Mr. Crowe Ratt or Mr. Mahoney because we definitely need to get that moving forward to the township board so we have a good, solid language of the CIP. Other than that, I have nothing. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Jody.
I'm sorry, I skipped public.
Oh, that's okay. Item number eight, public comment. There is no one here to comment, so we're done there. Jody just provided information. Anything else? Good. Move on to commission staff comment. We'll start at the left end. Mr. Lampowski.
Have a great rest of your week.
Nothing for me.
Nothing here.
All set.
Jody, Katrina, it's like you guys have done a CIP 10 times before. It's, we're lucky to have you put it all together and you got it going on, so good job.
All set.
I will say thank you and Katrina has done a ton of work on all the documents and I appreciate her very much.
Yeah, thank you. I would echo that with the CIP. It's, I made the comment today during our meeting that it's actually nice to do planning, right? And not, not sign waivers and, and other things. Not that that's not important, but, you know, we're, we're supposed to be planning, so it's good to be doing that. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening and a meeting is adjourned.